It being six o'clock, I am calling to order the Select Board Meeting of August 11th, 2025. If you join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Unfortunately, there's a flag right at the end of my tree.
This meeting is being telecast live by Chelmsford Telemedia and being recorded for later viewing by the public. And you'll note that there are four of us here tonight on the Select Board. We do have a member Jeff Hardy attending via Zoom. So we will be doing votes and on a, using roll call. And first up, we have Public Service Announcements.
Okay, so Public Service Announcements, Chelmsford Health Department's Monthly Newsletter, a lot of information here. They do a program called Breathe Together, Heal Together, and the date is on Wednesdays from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the North Chelmsford Community Center. Free meditation series created for individuals in recovery and the loved ones who walk beside them. Guided practices for all levels and contact the Health Department for more information. They also have a walking group and the future dates are one just past August 5th and the 26th. 9:00 a.m. to 9:30 at the 110 Baseball Field is where they'll meet. Join them as they walk on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail and get in your 30 minutes of exercise and socialize. They also have another program called the After Hours Playbook for Teens, and that was August 5th. I won't speak to that because that's passed. Plant Positivity Craft Noon is August 11th. That was today. Don't have to talk about that one. Community CPR, August 13th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Chelmsford Town Hall, join them for a comprehensive four-hour training session where you'll master CPR techniques for adults, childrens, and infants. You'll also learn how to respond to choking emergencies, understand AED basics, and cover essential first aid procedures. Every participant will receive the American Heart Association's Heart Saver CPR AED First Aid Certificate valid for two years. Don't miss the opportunity to gain vital life-saving skills. Cost is $20. Yoga and Meditation for Youth, August 19th, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Chelmsford Public Library. This 45-minute workshop combines beginner-friendly yoga and guided meditation to help youth manage stress, anxiety, and peer pressure with confidence. Through movement and mindfulness, youth will tune to their emotions and develop self-regulation skills, build resilience and inner confidence, and discover a sense of calm and focus in a supportive environment. All the Health Department for more information. Blood pressure screenings on August 7th have passed.
Nigger.
Narcan Training Save a Life, August 28th, from 3:00 to 3:30 at Chelmsford Town Hall, Room LL06. Employee Spotlight, Elise Pierce, Regional Health Inspector. We're happy to welcome Elise Pierce to the Chelmsford Health Department as our new Regional Health Inspector through NEPA organization and the Public Health Excellence Grant. Elise holds a Master's in Environmental Health Science from UMass Amherst and will be with them for two days a week assisting with food inspections, complaint investigations, housing co-compliance, and pool and lake inspections. They're excited to have her on board. They are also having a Chelmsford Health Department's Fall Festival, September 27th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. They are still accepting sponsors and vendors for the annual Fall Festival. They expect more than 3,000 attendees this year. Food trucks and free activities such as face painting, balloonists, petting zoo, hayrides, pumpkin painting, and much more. The next item that they have is Massachusetts Behavioral Health Helpline. Details. Free confidential help is available 24/7 across Massachusetts for mental health and substance use support. Call or text 833-732445 or chat@masshelpline.com. Sober Karaoke is coming up August 15th from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Chelmsford Center for the Arts. Join them for some sober, free fun, and free pizza. Empowering Youth with Life-Saving Skills, Public Health Nurse Dossie Beal and Public Health and Wellness Coordinator Taryn Angel, recently trained over 25 Chelmsford youth in CPR, first aid, and AED use. This hands-on session equipped participants with vital emergency response skills, fostering confidence and preparedness while supporting the town's commitment to public health education and youth empowerment. Contact the Health Department at 978-250-5241. The Chelmsford Military Community Covenant Task Force invites the community to attend their Military Appreciation Cookout. This will happen on Tuesday, August 12th, that's tomorrow, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Chelmsford Lodge of Elks at 300 Littleton Road, Chelmsford, Mass. This is free to all and will include hot dogs, hamburgers, watermelon desserts, soft drinks, and cash bars. So go join the Chelmsford Military Community Covenant for their Military Appreciation Cookout. Where do you want to walk, roll, or bike? How can we get you there safely? The Greater Lowell Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Regionwide Survey is now available. Help them create a safer, more accessible, and active transportation network across the region by sharing experiences, priorities, and ideas in our region-wide survey. Your response will help them understand how people get around our region, what prevents them from walking and biking and more, and the types of improvements that would encourage our communities to access their destinations comfortably. So that survey closes this Friday. If you go to the Greater Lowell Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, you'll see a link to click to take that survey. So go ahead and send information in on that. The Chelmsford Planning Board is seeking to appoint two meeting representative and two residents-at-large to the 2025 Managed Growth Strategy Task Force. This committee is expected to meet monthly or bi-weekly, depending on the tasks at hand. Depending, based upon the number of applications received, the Planning Board will invite interested parties to attend the September 10th, 2025, meeting to introduce themselves. If you go to the link and download this agenda from this evening, you'll see two links there for you to go ahead and review the commitment and also apply for that position. The role of the 2025 Managed Growth Strategy Task Force is select the consultant. Select the consultant the task force will be working with. Meet with the consultant on a regular basis with the consultant to find the process for developing the managed growth strategy, to find the problem we are trying to solve, definition of done, goals, timing, metrics. In addition to that, you'll gather data and information from various sources, including but not limited to the Chelmsford Housing Production Plan, 2025 Strategic Plan, and other sources available. Planning Board recommends the composition of the 2025 Managed Growth Strategy Task Force to be the following appointments. One Select Board Member, one 2020 Master Plan or Master Plan Implementation Member, two Strategic Plan Members, one ConCon Member, two Town Meeting Reps, two Residents, and one Department Community Development Advisor. If you're interested in serving on that 2025 Managed Growth Strategy Task Force, please submit an email or letter of interest no later than September 5, 2025, including relevant experience to Evan Bolansky, Director of Community Development at ebolansky@chelmsfordmass.gov. NIMCOG, Northern Middlesex Community of Governments are seeking volunteers for outdoor asset inventory. Our region is home to many beautiful, interactive landscapes. Whether it be fishing on a glistening pond or biking as the autumn leaves fall, Mass residents have a close relationship with the outdoors. Unfortunately, the majority of these tucked-away paradises aren't marked on our GPS maps, are able to be found with a simple Google search. Being able to enjoy these serenities of nature shouldn't be impossible. So if you want to join this survey and help put together the asset inventory, you can contact NIMCOG. So to volunteer, please complete the form. Questions about the project can be directed to Amy Bickford, NIMCOG Municipal Fellow, at abickford@nmco.org. Take the LRTA, the Lowell Regional Transportation Authority, five-year Regional Comprehensive Transit Plan Survey. If you download our agenda again this evening, you'll see a link there to go ahead and do that survey. And with that, that completes community announcements.
Thank you. Next up, we have General Public Input. Do we have anyone for General Public Input?
No, there's nobody on Zoom. We had some people removed from Zoom who were trying to get in appropriately, but nobody.
Yeah, we apologize for that.
We apologize for that, but there's nobody on Zoom who's here for General Public Input. We have people on Zoom for the license and the other matter, but not for public input.
Thank you. Thanks, Pete, for taking care of that. So next up, we have Committee Vacancies.
Committee Vacancies, as of August 11th, 2025. Agricultural Commission has one unexpired three-year term ending June 30, 2026. Board of Assessors has one unexpired three-year term ending June 30, 2027. Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has one three-year term ending June 30, 2028. Capital Planning Committee has one three-year term ending June 30, 2028. Chelmsford Center for the Arts Town Hall Advisory Committee has one three-year term ending June 30th, 2028. Community on Disabilities has one unexpired three-year term ending June 30th, 2026. Two unexpired three-year terms ending June 30th, 2027, and one three-year term ending June 30th, 2028. Council on Aging Board has one unexpired three-year term ending June 30th, 2026, and two three-year terms ending June 30th, 2028. Historic District Commission Alternate Member has one unexpired three-year term ending June 30th, 2027. Holiday Decorating Committee has two unexpired one-year terms ending December 31st, 2025. Parade Committee welcomes all applicants to one-year terms ending July 31st, 2026. Permanent Building Committee has one three-year term ending June 30th, 2028. And the Vinyl Squares Strategic Action Plan Committee Business Representative, one unexpired three-year term ending 630, 2026. If you're interested in serving on a Town Board of Committee, please complete an online application available at the town website. For more information, please contact the Town Manager's Office at 978-250-5202 or TM Office at chelmsfordmass.gov.
Thanks, Pat. Next on our agenda, we have licenses, and we have a couple here. It looks like first up, we have a one-day all-alcoholic beverage license for the American Legion at 90 Groton Road for August 16th.
Dan Vigent is on Zoom for this.
Okay.
How you doing? Dan Vigent, Commander of the American Legion, Post 313.
Hi, Dan. How are you?
Good. How you doing tonight?
Good, thanks. So what's going on? You guys having a party?
Yeah, our annual block party in August is going to be held behind the Legion on Willis Drive. So we'll be blocking off the road from the entrance at Groton Road all the way to the edge of our building. Be using our top lot for parking as well as the senior center for overflow.
Okay. I feel like you guys have done this a whole bunch of times before. Does anybody have any questions for Dan?
Yeah. How do people get from the senior center to your venue?
That'd mainly be walking. Yeah, there's a crosswalk right over to, so it's all sidewalk, all the way to our building.
Good.
Any other questions? I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that the Board approve a one-day all-alcoholic beverage license for the block party to be held on August 16th, 2025, at the parking lot of the American Legion at 90 Groton Road in North Chelmsford, as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, and we are going to do a roll call vote. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
Pat?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, and the motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Enjoy your party.
Thank you.
And next up, we have an auctioneer's permit for Everett Murray, DBA Murray and Murray Auctioneers at 63 Middlesex Street.
Attorney Greg Halliday is on Zoom as well.
Good evening. My name is Greg Halliday, and I represent Everett Murray. Mr. Murray is the owner of 6163 Middlesex Street. He purchased it in early 2023. He operates a warehouse there, and he also has a trucking company, Triple M Movers. He's operated that for probably over 20 years. And as any warehouseman or bonded mover, he's had situations in the past where you've had to auction off items that were abandoned by the prior owners. And that's pretty much an ancillary use to the warehousing that he does, as well as the bonded moving. He's been an auctioneer licensed by the Massachusetts Division of Standards for over 24 years. He previously worked operating a warehouse in Townsend. He had that for several years without incident, and he had an auctioneer's permit from Townsend, and he's looking to be able to do the same here. He's filed his business certificate. He has filed with the Board his state auctioneer's license, and he's paid the fee. He's asking for an annual permit, deducts auctions. He anticipates one or two monthly auctions may be necessary. It would be done at the lower level of the building.
He's willing to live with the Fire Department regulations as far as posting the occupancy limit, et cetera, at the entry to that room where they'd be holding auctions and so on?
Yes, as well as the comments by the building inspector. We've worked with the building inspector for a number of months.
Excellent. Thank you.
Oh, is this an annual license? Will it have to be renewed every year? It is. Okay.
Does anyone have any other questions?
You said that there was one or two a month potentially. What time of day do the auctions take place?
Maybe it does in the weekends. Mr. Murray is in the, he's attending live. If you could address that question, it could probably give you a better sense from history.
Just go up to the podium, sir. That would be great.
Good afternoon. The auctions will be done on Saturdays in the afternoon when there's hardly anybody in the parking lot and we can fit 20, 25 cars. So that's about the size of the auction I'm expecting. I don't think I want to go more than that. Only takes two.
I appreciate it. That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Yes.
Did they say that you own three Triple M Movers also? So you're a moving company also?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Interesting. Sounds good to me. Okay, then I'll take a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the Board approve an auctioneer's permit for Everett Murray doing business as Murray and Murray Auctioneers to be exercised on the premises at 63 Middlesex Street in Chelmsford, as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. We'll do another roll call vote. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
And Pat Woodges?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so the motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have reports and presentations. And first up, we have a presentation from the Recycling Committee, a request to support the paint recycling state legislation. And we do have someone here from the Recycling Committee, I believe.
Hi, I'm Leigh Williams. I'm on the Chelmsford Recycling Committee, and also here we have Rebecca Gore, also a member, and Tom Irwin, who is a private resident of Massachusetts who has lots of background information. So hopefully between the three of us, we can answer any questions you have. So I'll just give you a little background. Our recommendation is written, but I can give you a little background on what this is. So the Town Manager, Halkon, asked the Committee to give us a recommendation on the Paint Stewardship Bills, House 886 and Senate 647, titled "An Act Relative to Paint Recycling." He asked us to look into it and discuss it, provide a recommendation to the Select Board. And we did that on our July 10 meeting. We discussed it, and I can give you a little more detail about it. But our decision was to unanimously support a recommendation that you sign a letter of support to the Legislature in support of these two bills. So the two bills have to do with their paint recycling, how to responsibly handle paint that's unwanted. Right now, if you have latex paint, you need to, and you hardly ever get the right amount of paint. There's always a little leftover. It's very hard to avoid having leftover. Oil-based paint, you need to set aside until the next hazardous waste drop-off, which is now once a year, and dispose of it then. If you have latex paint, that is not taken at the hazardous waste drop-off. It is considered non-hazardous, but to dispose of it in the trash, it has to be solidified first, which is troublesome and time-consuming and expensive, too. The only way you can do it is if you have a tiny bit of paint, you take off the lid and you let it dry, 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 dry. If you have a little more, you have to add some solidifier, like kitty litter. You have to go out, unless you have a cat, which I don't, you have to go buy it, mix it up, and then wait, wait, wait for it to solidify till finally you can put it in your trash, and it goes to an incinerator. So with paint recycling, you have much better options. You can provide it to manufacturers who will actually recycle the paint. They put all the blues together, all the greens together, and so forth, and they can create a sellable paint. So you can buy it at the Habitat for Humanity Restore in Billerica. They carry this recycled paint. It's sold at a discount. It keeps the paint out of the landfill and provides a cheap alternative for paint for a lot of people. So that's all good. Now, let me tell you just a little bit more about this. This bill is to establish a program where residents of Massachusetts can take their paint to a retailer that sells paint. And that provides the resident a convenient place to take it. They don't have to wait till the next drop-off. They don't have to solidify it. They can just take it to the store for no fee. And it's collected, and the retailer takes it and sends it to whoever's doing the recycling. The cost is paid upfront when you buy the paint. In other states, in New England, most other states in New England have this kind of program already in place. And the fee is maybe 75 cents to $1.25 per gallon. Paint right now is running about $50 a gallon, so that's pretty small in comparison for the convenience of being able to take your leftover paint somewhere, let someone else handle it. So the bill is to establish a program. We believe, the Chelmsford Recycling Committee believes, this is a good thing for the town of Chelmsford because it will, first of all, provide residents with something, a convenient, inexpensive option to dispose of their paint responsibly. That in itself was enough for me. Secondly, it will reduce our town's costs for hazardous household waste collection. Right now, we do collect oil-based paints at our November collection. The cost for six barrels or units of oil-based paint at $850 per unit was over $5,000. All that oil-based paint could be, with this program in place, could be just sent to the retailer. Someone else deals with it. We also had aerosol collection, which added up to, like spray paints would be included in that, $2,600. So that was just for one household hazardous waste drop-off. So those costs would be reduced. It'll also reduce the amount of tonnage we send to the incinerator. Once the paint is solidified, it goes, we pay by the ton, so that would, the tonnage would come down. And it's also good for the environment. It will keep people from improperly disposing of the paints. And it also gives us a chance to reduce and reuse buying of new paint by being able to buy recycled paint. And so that's all good for the environment. I think that, in a nutshell, is what we wanted to convey. So we are recommending that you send a letter of support to the Legislature, and this is a sample that you could use to convey your support from the town. And many, many towns in Massachusetts have already sent their endorsement to the Legislature, and we think this will help build momentum to get some action on these two bills. Questions?
I have a question. So it's not mandatory for the retailers?
Correct, correct. A retailer could voluntarily opt into this program. They don't have to.
So what is, I don't really, I'm not sure they understand what the point in the bill is, if it's a voluntary program that's run by a nonprofit and the retailer is directly. I'm not really, I don't really understand what the point is in having a bill at the state level if it's a voluntary program that's run by a nonprofit, and what does the enactment of the bill actually accomplish?
Well, it does set, it does set the amount of.
Oh, because there's a sales tax on it?
It's not exactly a tax. It's more of a fee that goes to support the program. And that would, but that would be universal across the state. Remember, where you bought it, it would be the same amount at each store.
And it goes directly back to the nonprofit?
They do use the money to run the program, and it is audited to make sure that the money is being used appropriately.
The state doesn't run the program. A nonprofit runs the program.
Correct. That's how it's been enacted in other states, and we think the recommendations are the similar program.
Pay a surcharge on the electricity bill, and then they contract with Mass Save to run the energy audits in those programs. Same thing here. You'd pay a surcharge on your paint purchase, and then those revenues would go to the state on this program.
So.
Because the state doesn't have the resources to run it.
Yeah.
So that $1.25 a gallon that you pay extra now for paint will go to the state to build and manage recycling, paint recycling facilities?
So if the state run?
If it be stayed administered.
I think Tom can explain the details a little better. You might have to come to the microphone.
A bill where you get, you don't bring your empty can back and get your dollar twenty-five back.
Yeah, you don't get it back. Yeah.
The monies, whether it's seventy-five cents or a dollar twenty-five, would be sent directly to the nonprofit to operate. No monies go directly to the state if they haven't gone through the nonprofit first. The only monies that go to the state is to defray the cost of doing the evaluation of the third-party audit that occurs each year, state by state. It's approximately two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
So the state does the audit, but they pay a third-party auditor to do it? So the money would go towards the state's auditing cost?
Correct.
It's just passing through. It's not, and I think it said that in there. It doesn't go into the state coffers. It just, it gets collected and then sent off to the third.
Is there anything in here that makes it law that a citizen must recycle?
Nope. There's nothing in there that makes it mandatory to recycle your paint. The purpose of the law is to prevent an antitrust suit being brought against the nonprofit, which would be essentially frivolous, but for the intention of actually bankrupting the nonprofit. So that's the reason that Paint Care, the name of the nonprofit that the American Coatings Association put together to manage this whole project, is requests to have in order to be able to operate safely within the state.
So every consumer is going to pay the additional cost, whether they were bringing their can back or not?
Right, right.
So the costs are going to go up?
Is Massachusetts, the dollar twenty-five, is that commensurate with the surrounding states that have enacted this program already? Is that pricing similar to Maine and Vermont and Rhode Island?
Connecticut, Rhode Island, Connecticut, Rhode Island, and Maine all have seventy-five cents per gallon. That was the number in two thousand eleven. It's still the same number in each of the states now. It's been that way again for, you know, over ten years. They're anticipating it's probably going to go up by a nickel. The exception to that rate is Vermont. And in Vermont, the reason that they have the issue is because there's a large number of people in New York and New Hampshire and Massachusetts that bring their unwanted paint to Vermont for disposal. And they don't necessarily purchase the paint from Vermont, so that imbalance is what has driven up the cost for the per-gallon price in Vermont. When New Hampshire passes the law this session, as anticipated, and we pass it here, that number should reverse itself and come down more in line with the other states. The number for Connecticut right now is, I believe, ninety cents per gallon. So I'm going to expect that we're going to see a number somewhere between eighty and ninety cents here in Massachusetts when the law passes.
So that's to be determined, the actual cost?
Yeah. It'll be negotiated between Paint Care and Mass D E P. And you folks may also be pleased to know that the MMA is a strong supporter of this law and has been so for several sessions of legislature. The Mass D E P and their twenty-thirty Solid Waste Master Plan calls out E P R in general and paint stewardship in particular has mechanisms to implement their zero-waste program. And that calls out for a thirty percent reduction in waste by twenty-thirty and a ninety percent reduction by twenty-fifty. And without these programs, it's hard to imagine how they could accomplish this.
Couldn't they just, Paint Care just go directly to the retailers as a service provider and take the additional?
But then it would be voluntary, really.
Well, it's going to be voluntary either way.
No, but it's not going to be voluntary as far as people paying it. It's going to be voluntary whether that retailer will take it back. Is that correct, Tom?
Right. The reason for the seventy-five cent fee is they have to haul it, pay for haulers. And when it gets to the recycling plant, there's handling above the...
Oh, yeah, no, of course.
And so the seventy-five cent fee is going to be present whether, you know, we say to them, "You have to do it on your own," or the retailer pays seventy-five cents. If we tell them they have to do it on their own, what I imagine they will do is just like if the price of one of the constituents of paint went up by seventy-five cents, it would be passed on to the consumer. It'll be passed on to the consumer in this regard as well.
Yeah, it'll be passed on to the consumer either way.
Right.
But, yeah, the only difference in Paint Care going directly to the retailers and just doing it as a business model is that there's an audit by the state.
The way this law was...
This just allows the state to do the audit, essentially.
The way this law was generated was that the retailers, the manufacturers, consumer groups, and state agencies all sat in a room for a period of less than six years, hashing out what language and what methodology should be used to implement such a program. This law is the result of those six years of negotiation.
Does the state need to audit the program for EPA purposes? Or is there, is there...
They audit it in two regards. They audit in regard to compliance with the program, are they hauling correctly? Are they giving out the right totes? Are they doing all the procedures that are agreed on? So they do that level of audit. Then the second level of audit is that after a third-party does the financial audit of Paint Care for that given state, that report goes to the state. The state reviews that. And if there's any discussion about increase in the rate for the per-gallon price and so forth, it occurs at that particular point.
But I mean, does the audit need to be done because of environmental protection standards or something like that? Is that more what the audit is about?
Nope. That's just, it is, it is...
It's simply a...
It's simply a mechanism to assure that they're operating fairly as nonprofit and responsibly. Because they take in monies, they have, they have monies in a fund that exceed what they need to operate in a year. And what they're doing is monitoring how much is in that residual fund and seeing whether it shrinks or it's going up. And that helps get, that's important input when they make the decision as to what the fee should be per gallon. And they, you know, they do their due diligence. They check to make sure that salaries are reasonable and all the other markers are fair in operating the program for the state.
Yeah. So that they can still be classified as a nonprofit. But that's, I mean, I think every nonprofit has to do that. I don't know why you need a state bill to monitor that this one nonprofit is.
They need a way to collect the money.
Correct.
That's what it's doing.
But every nonprofit has to have a financial audit done every year to be compliant, to, for their status reporting or whatever it is, right?
But the financial piece...
Why does this require a...
The financial audit does not require a law. That is absolutely not part of the reason that the law is being generated. Only reason that we're not just doing this and without worrying about a law is because of the antitrust suit, because of, as you mentioned, collecting the seventy-five cents. That's it. That's the real basis and reason for the law. There is no other reason.
But you have to make sure every retailer collects that money and turns it over. Otherwise, if it made it voluntary, then, yeah, people, you know, the bigger retailers could opt out and not do anything, but...
Well, actually, the bigger...
They can still opt out.
The bigger retailers do actually don't participate in the program. The smaller retailers do.
To return it. But if you buy it, no matter where you buy it, you will have to pay that amount.
Correct.
Oh, every, oh, so every store that you go into, they will have to pay that. Oh, okay. Not just at the retailers that are participating.
Correct. Even if you buy it on the web, you will pay, they find out what state it's going to. And if that's a Paint Care state, you get, you pay the fee, whatever it is.
So Paint Care's been at this a while? And there's a few states at this point?
Since two thousand eight.
And has there been any reports of, you know, paint, especially in the smaller stores, kind of piling up? Or do these, because I'm more concerned about the smaller stores that don't have necessarily the storage space. But if all of a sudden somebody shows up with twenty-five partial gallons of paint, they don't really, they can't store that forever, and it's got to get off-site. So what's, what's the process and the experience, Ben?
So they've got an extremely responsive organization set up. If you go call Paint Care from a retailer, within two to four business days, they're there with an empty tote, taking your full one away.
And that's the only effort the retailer has to do with the incoming paint, is make a phone call?
That's it.
And Paint Care is responsible for picking it up?
They are. Dropping off an empty, taking the full. It sounded too good to be true when I started with this. So I went to Vermont, New York, and Connecticut and talked with retailers and talked with consumers to confirm that this thing was even half as good as it sounded on paper. And I was flabbergasted. Nobody had any complaints. The only complaint I ever heard was midnight deliveries. And I wondered what that is. He says, "People will drop off their cans of paint at the front door at midnight, okay? And we come in in the morning, and there they are." But other than that, they said, "No, the small stores, we have increased foot traffic, and it more than pays for itself for us." So we're very happy because we're taking Lowe's and Home Depots and Walmart's paint back. So all of those people are coming to our store, buying more brushes, buying a little touch-up can and all the other stuff. So it's been good.
Is there a, I admittedly have not read either one of the bills. Is there, are there any exceptions or carve-outs? You know, I'm thinking if I'm a contractor and I'm building a bunch of houses and I have to go buy five hundred gallons of paint, my bill just went up by five hundred bucks. And I may or may not care at that point in time. But is there any exemptions for, or carve-outs for when people have to buy larger quantities?
If you buy five gallons, it's not, let's call it a dollar just to make the discussion easy. It's not, it's not five dollars for that gallon. It's going to be roughly, it's going to be two dollars for five gallons. Because generally, when people buy paint, it's roughly the same amount left over in the bottom of the pail. So the experience has showed that they don't have to charge that extra five hundred dollars, be an extra two hundred, and that'll get passed on to the consumer when they, you know, when they're executing the job. The other thing that's good for contractors is if they've got, I've got a hundred gallons of paint sitting in my shed. They call up Paint Care and say, "I've got a hundred gallons in my shed." Paint Care sends out a truck, puts it all in their truck, drives off, not a penny's change in his hands.
Is there a disposal cost for contractors if they have paint like that lineup?
We're required. I mean, we do it because all of our clients expect it. OSHA requires it, you know. So commercially, it's a very, it's a thing. I mean, it's what we do.
It's costly to get rid of paint.
Well, what we do is we solidify paints and dispose of them properly. So we buy solidifiers and things like that. Our vendors do and such, so...
But arguably, that example, if you had, you know...
It would be, it would be a good service. But, you know, my problem with this is, you know, of course, Massachusetts is the, you know, a dollar twenty-five instead of seventy-five or ninety cents, you know. And you know it'll be at a dollar twenty-five when this passes. Has there been an indication of schedule as to when recycling centers would come online as a result of putting this? Like, how long before a local recycling center could come online once they initiate this bill?
Approximately one year, six months to a year.
For one or numerous ones across the state? Best to your knowledge.
To, based on history with other states, between the passage of the law and then actually seeing it on the ground at retail stores, transfer stations and like, it's at least six months, more often closer to a year. And at that point, all the negotiations that have to occur between the D E P and Paint Care have finished. And all stuff that needs to be figured out has been figured out, and the program begins.
The charging at that point starts? Or does the bill pass, we start charging a buck a can, and then six months later or a year later, we get recycling?
No, it's when they, when it starts to happen in the stores, that's when the fee goes on. And so if you've got paint in your basement, you know, I didn't pay no, I didn't pay any fee for that. Doesn't matter. They don't care where you bought it. They don't care where you bought it from, when you bought it. Just bring it in. That's just the reason why Massachusetts residents bring paint across the line to the adjoining states that have the law, to get rid of it. It costs them nothing. They put it on a counter. The only rules are, it's got to be the original can, original label, and still liquid. Beats all three of those, they take it without question.
And there's a higher fee, a lower fee for a five-dollar container, five-gallon container versus a single gallon. What are they charging for quart cans in small quantities?
So I'm familiar with the pricing system of seventy-five cents. It'd be thirty-five, seventy-five, one-sixty. Anything less than a quart, there's no fee.
So I have a question. As Leigh mentioned, when we have the household hazardous waste pickup, many, many, many gallons are dropped off there. Is there any way that, if, until this passes, or if it doesn't, if Paint Care would come and take those, that paint, rather than having to pay the expense that we do now to get rid of it?
Until it becomes law, no, they would not. I am aware, if you bring your latex to the Home Decor Group, they've got twenty-one stores sprinkled around, one, four ninety-five, one twenty-eight. And if you bring it into theirs, they will charge you four dollars for per gallon of latex to reprocess it. And that, all that total four dollars goes to Recolor Paints out of Hanover that does the reprocessing. The recolor will come, pick up the paint, and bring it to their plant and reprocess it. And the other piece is that New England Disposal Technologies has a place in Sutton. And if you bring it there, it is, they weigh your can, and it's one dollar per pound. So it's, you know, most cans that are returned are roughly fifty percent full. So it would be of the same order that, you know, you would pay if you went to the Home Decor Group.
So why isn't there anyone who would come pick it up from the town recycling if those...
Because it hasn't been paid, because people haven't paid the, whatever, to...
The town would have to pay them to do it. They would have to pay them to take it.
If the law gets passed, and for whatever reason, you know, none of the stores want to be involved and this and that, if you, you can call up Paint Care and say, "Hey, would you arrange a paint return day for us?" They'll come out with a truck at no cost, they'll hold the day, put the stuff in the truck, and be gone. So they do, they really try hard to make it convenient for folks.
So if this, if this did pass, then we, that would be available?
Yep.
As far as for the household hazardous waste?
Yep. Well, not for hazardous oil-based paints and spray cans, yes. For the rest of the household hazardous stuff.
Right, exactly. Yeah. I mean, we wouldn't expect them to take everything, actually.
But if this doesn't pass, it cannot?
Well, because it's not a law, because the amount, the fee hasn't been paid on all those, all that paint.
Paint Care can't just come and, they need money to operate. They can't just come and pick up our stuff free. That's not, I mean, they're a nonprofit, but they have to pay people.
Well, no, but they recycle it and turn around and sell it as recycled paint. So there's a, yeah, there's, they're making it off of both ends, if you understand.
Well, they aren't. They're...
They don't make any money off the reprocessing. The reprocessing plant stays alive that way. The amount that Paint Care pays the reprocessor is not enough to keep the reprocessor going alone. What has to be paid, there's a little bit that comes from that seventy-five cents. In order to make money, what they have to do is they have to also do the hauling as well as the reprocessing of the paint. So Paint Care is not, there's no lavish anything going on. Everything is real tight, real tight. I would bet that, again, we're going to see somewhere between eighty and ninety cents per gallon. I'll buy you dinner, if I'm wrong.
Pushing that direction because, you know, it's typical Massachusetts.
I understand. Totally understand.
That kind of cost.
I understand.
I'd like to leave one anecdote. I'd like to give you one anecdote just from the Recycling Committee's perspective. When we have a hazardous waste day, there's a long line of cars. We have to check every trunk to see if there's any latex paint in there. And even if they say, "No, I don't have any latex paint. It's all oil," we have to check it, and we always find it. Because people don't know what else to do with it. And when we tell them, "Nope, sorry, we can't take this. You got to put it in the front seat," they are not happy. And we tell them, "You have to go buy kitty litter, which costs a lot more than a dollar, and deal with the effort to do that." We would love to be able to tell them, "Sure, you take it to Sherwin-Williams," or, "And they'll take it today," or, "We'll have a collection at our zero-waste day. Bring it then," or some other option, just to get it off their hands. Because you see the frustration in their faces. And we have an army of volunteers right now going through every single trunk because of people don't know what to do with their paint. So just wanted to mention that. So, just wanted to mention that.
I'd like to think that this has an impact on getting improperly disposed paint out of the improper channels.
You would think, yes.
And I'm already paying sixty bucks a gallon, I mean, if I have to pay another buck and have a conscience, I'm probably not gonna stress about that. I'm also not gonna buy the sixty gallon paint, I'm gonna go find the half-price paint.
But the commercial guy, but the commercial guys, I mean, what's the commercial impact too, I don't know?
Well, that's what I want to talk about.
Yeah. Cause they're using more than a five gallon bucket.
Well, I'm a director on a franchise and we sell five gallon to fifty-five gallon drums of either water-based or oil-based paint, none of it's latex. And Rebecca mentioned the spray cans, we also supply great spray cans. What is the proper disposal of an empty spray can? Have they addressed that at all?
We do, we do currently, currently take aerosol, uh, spray paint at household hazardous waste. At the November one, we spent twenty-six hundred dollars to dispose of three units of it. I'm not sure how many u- is in a unit, but, um, five hundred cars go through, so it's, it's not a lot. And, and for about twenty-six hundred dollars to dispose of that spray paint.
Well, going back to Erin's point, if I, if I ship a fifty-five gallon drum paint to, uh, one of our franchises in Massachusetts, are they gonna get hit with a five hundred dollar surcharge?
No, no, cause you're already paid.
Well, I think no, because.
It's not a retail sale.
Yeah, because they, you don't charge for over five gallons, correct?
Five hundred gallons is, or a hundred gallons, or anything beyond five gallons, there's, it's not handled through this program. If you decide, see, I'm gonna come back with my fifty-five gallon drum and hand it to, uh, paint care. Well, yeah, uh, it's not gonna quite work because they don't have capacity for that, why not? That I can't answer, I don't know the answer.
Right, I apologize, I was talking about fifty-five gallon drums. And I'm confident that, oh, most of our dealers don't have any waste, they use, they use it up and then buy another one. And they don't throw anything out because it's too costly.
Right.
But they're not charged, they're charging on quarts, gallons, and five gallons, that's it, right? Just those three quantities.
That's, I understand it.
So, again, it's, it's retail level, not commercial level?
Correct. And currently, there are a hundred and twelve municipalities that are supporting this in the state. And I'm pushing to get a hundred and seventy-six so I can tell the legislature that over fifty percent of the municipalities support this and over fifty percent of the state's population.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for, for all your hard work here.
Do you want a, uh, motion?
Um, yes, I'll take a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion that the select board support the recommendation of the Chelmsford Recycling Committee. And that support, uh, is to write a l- a letter of support to the legislature to, um, support House Bill H eight eight six. An act relative to paint recycling and Senate Bill S six forty-seven, an act relative to paint recycling as presented this evening.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, we are gonna do a roll call vote, Pat Maloney.
Aye.
Pat Woodges.
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
And Erin?
Yes.
And I, um, I'm actually, I'm gonna abstain on this, I can do that, right? I'm gonna abstain, cause I'm really undecided. Um, but the motion passes either way, so, um, so, congratulations, um, to all those in support. And do we have to write, do we write the letter?
It's written. Sample letter, we'll take care of it.
Okay. Okay, so we don't have to work on it? Oh, oh, thank you. But, but it comes from the select board, right?
We'll, we'll get on the letterhead and get it out.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, uh, next up, we have the, uh, select board policy, the town accountant hiring process. So, we've already looked at this before, right? This is like our second or third draft.
Well, second one, yeah.
Second draft, right?
Yeah, and, and I think I got all the edits that we talked about unless somebody sees something that I missed, or if there's anything else you thought of.
Looks fine to me.
No, I'm good with it.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, if nobody has any comments, no? Do we, and we are.
We need an emotion.
We do, we're gonna vote, right, to adopt it? Okay, so I'll take a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion that the select board approve, um, the policy guidelines for the process to hire a town accountant as drafted.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, we'll do a roll call vote again, Pat Maloney.
Aye.
Pat Woodges, and Jeff?
Aye.
And Erin?
Yes.
And I'm an aye. So, the policy is adopted. Thank you, Pat, for that, for working on that. And next up, we have town manager reports.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm trying to be brief this evening. First one is, last Monday, uh, the first Monday in August, August fourth, was the deadline for the submission of citizen petition warrant articles for the fall annual town meeting. We received one citizen petition article from John Ray regarding preservation of open fields at Coles Farm. The article was certified by the town clerk's office, so it will be placed on the warrant, uh, for the fall town meeting. The next item I have is the first draft of the warrant for the fall annual town meeting. There is currently thirty articles on the warrant for the fall annual town meeting. Ten of those articles are, all pertain to one zoning change, which is the CBLT zoning amendment that's being proposed by the, um, planning board. And is in the process, hearing process right now. What I anticipate would happen is that probably will be considered in a consent agenda of its own, to say, we'll take up these ten articles. Because adding a new zoning category, as you can see in the excruciating details of the listed articles. It, you, you're going into all different components of the, the zoning map and the definitions and the tables and so forth. And so, that's what's spelled out here on the warrant, so I imagine that's how it would get addressed. Uh, in addition to that, the planning board is, is bringing in four other zoning matters. One regarding the definite, uh, definition of, uh, and pertaining to massage service establishments. One coming back from the Springtown meeting, which is the definition of family. Another one coming back from Springtown meeting, which was deleting the special permit references to schools. And then one, uh, a slight modification to our accessory dwelling unit bylaw that was approved in January, that was recommended by the Attorney General's Office. So, those are the zoning articles, which is sort of the primary purpose of fall town meeting. In addition to that, we have a general bylaw amendment by the ATEF committee to basically, um, modify the deadline process for the submission of applications be- before the ATEF. The, um, there's also a, um, article that was, that, that I'm putting forward. This has to do with the second generational anticoagulant rodenticides, um, by, which you may recall was brought forward by Newhouse and by, uh, Wildlife. This would basically mirror action that's been taken in the town of Barrika and other towns, which is to basically, sort of what you're, similar to what you heard earlier this evening. They'd like a statewide ban, but, and a way to achieve that is to do a local town meeting vote to request a home rule special act. And then basically feeling that if you besiege a state with enough of these home rule acts, that they'll just adopt it statewide. Similar to what's happened in the past, but, but hasn't been achieved on plastic bag bans and straw bans and so forth, the, so that's the, um.
But we didn't need home petitions on those.
No, because those were local options. Right now, the state doesn't provide a local option, so the only way to do that is to do a home rule petition. So, basically, this is basically mirrors the action that was taken at Barica's spring annual town meeting, just changes the name of the town. And, um, so that's what's going on there. And as, as a town practice and policy, we have stopped the use of them in our facilities and, and town buildings. Very similar to what, you know, has been discussed here before and is, occurs in the city of Lowell and, and Lowell Housing Authority and other locations because of the impact on wildlife.
Paul, go ahead. Real quickly, what's, um, the acronym CBLT, what's that, what is that?
Oh, um, it's, it's, it's commercial business light, light.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought.
And it's meant to be the buffer between the commercial and the residential zones. That's why the planning board is initiating this process, but it's, yeah, commercial business light. What it is, is it, it allows many of the uses that are allowed in the commercial business, but then excludes some that are seen to be inhospitable to residential. So, that's the idea of this buffering. Um, and that, that's being proposed in areas where, where these conflicts arise, such as the one that's had the most notoriety on this is, has been the Lockheed Martin up in, uh, Kate's Corner area of town.
Well, it's actually manufacturing ultralight, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Twenty-two.
That's that, and then prior to that, at, at the beginning of the, of the warrant, you see your financial articles. This, the cemetery commission again is coming for funding for the Cemetery Improvement Development Fund. They need another niche wall at the cemetery. Um, we, we do the annual, every fall, this deposit into the sewer construction stabilization fund from the interest earnings on that fund. I have a placeholder for collective bargain agreements because we're still negotiating with the dispatchers and the firefighters unions, case agreements are reached. We have a placeholder to amend the current year operating budget. We have a placeholder to put funding into roadway and sidewalk construction. We're, I have an article to put, um, funding to continue the design for the reconstruction of, of Route three A or North Road from Technology Drive to Richardson Road. Uh, we, how that program works is, is the town has to pay the design costs and we, we've done preliminary design, now we gotta do final design to hopefully get that project on the transportation improvement, uh, program of, of the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, um, transportation program. We have a article for, a placeholder right now for sewer infiltration and inflow. An article for, uh, the replacement of the emergency power supply, power system at the police station. We also have an article to fund acoustical improvements at the senior center, including not only the main hall, but also other parts of the building. Many of us have been there, have known, and we've, we've heard from the council on aging, um, board, uh, is others that the acoustics at that facility need improvement. And then we have a, um, fund, a placeholder for a tree and invasive species inventory and management plan, which is the ongoing effort. We, I have a placeholder to, for regarding the PFAS treatment, uh, if the town needs to continue to fund the carbon filters for the North Chelmsford Water District. Uh, we anticipate that cost, that filter will need to be replaced prior to the end of this fiscal year. Um, and then we, we also need town meeting authorization to, um, provide a new thirty-year lease period for the municipal parking lot lease in Vinyl Square behind the municipal lot. So, the, if you're familiar with the municipal lot is in Vinyl Square across from Rosie's, the town owns the front part. The back part is actually a dollar a year lease from the property owner, um, to the right, if you're looking at the lot. So, we've been in conversations with that, uh, new, new owner of that lot and they're amenable to doing a, another thirty-year renewal at the same price.
At a dollar, a dollar a year?
Yeah.
That's a good deal.
And, and then, you know, so that, so that's, but that needs town meeting authorization because we ran it by council. He didn't think the original vote thirty years ago was sufficient to allow repetitive thirty-year periods. And then the last part, article that's not on here that you will see next week is I'm putting a placeholder on to, for funding for the McCarthy School roof. As we know, that's a huge roof and a huge ongoing project, we've already appropriated a million dollars to get started on that. And the early indications that are uncertified from the town accountant and finance director at this point is, we will have less certified free cash than last year, which was around two percent of our budget. But that, that really would be the place to put the additional funding to continue moving that project along because that project is, is probably a four-million-dollar project. And if we, you know, if, if we put that into our regular capital plan, it's gonna, it's gonna absorb half the capital.
You have solar panels on that roof too?
Yeah, we've got solar panels on that roof as well, yeah, so, so that's what we're thinking. So, I, I guess at this point today, the difference I see from this list till next Monday night would be the addition of that article that's not included here. Evan Belansky, that community development, I could, did provide me with some language and order changes from the planning board on how they want the articles in which order. Uh, even though we know, of order, but I'll do that and I'll review the language. So, next week, I'll give you a revised version of this. And then it'll be sent to council for a legal review and then when you meet the, on, you're following that on September eighth, you'll sign the warrant. Um, and then it'll quickly go to Fin- Finance Committee and then town meeting on October twentieth. So, it's coming real fast. So, that's where we are on the fall town meeting warrant. The next thing, under my report, um, is a land donation offer at sixty to sixty-six Middlesex Street. This occurred when, uh, on tax day, a person came into the collector's office and, I guess, was tired of paying the tax on the, on the property that's assessed for a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And said, jeez, would the town be interested in accepting this land as donation? The concern that we have, and it's, I, I, maybe I can blow this up, and it is, the location, it's very wet. Uh, it's in Vinyl Square, uh, across from the mill. And the concern is, is, and, and really the value of that land really might be for ancillary parking to the mill. And it has been used, you can see this area in the front, has been used as a parking area, uh, on Middlesex Street. Because the land is wet and there's no contiguous conservation land or town-owned land adjacent to it, it really has no va- va- value to the town. And because it is located across from the mill and is, is been used as a parking area. We don't know, we, we haven't done soil testing on that land, so we don't know what may have historically been in use. So, I think the recommendation from the town staff, meaning the town manager, the finance director, and DPW director, is to pass on this offer because I, I don't see a benefit to the town. But, again, the offer, I don't have the authority, you know, and, and I wouldn't make that decision unilaterally. Not mayor, uh, and therefore, um, I, I formally bring it to you, uh, as an informational thing. But, again, it, it, it really, I don't see it having a benefit to the town. And I, and what, what we've suggested to the property owner is you might wanna just reach out to the mill owner across the street and see if they would pay you a fee to acquire the land. Because if you, if it has very limited development potential because of the wetlands and the flood zone, then maybe it might have limited for parking benefit as overflow for the mill.
What are the taxes?
Well, a hundred and thirty, thirty-three thousand, yeah.
Thirty-four thousand, which seems high for a, a non-developed piece of property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if your tax rate's around seventeen dollars per thousand, so you're probably, you're probably talking, you know, two hundred and. If you look in the history, which I did, on the acquisition of the property, the assessor's field card, the parcel was assessed at six million dollars at one point when it was, it, it was under mill. So, we suspect it may have been part of a larger parcel, perhaps with, with the contiguous across the street. It makes no sense that, that you look at the historic sale value of the property. Yeah, it's, yeah, exactly, it just doesn't, you know, and, no, I'm talking in the nineties and two thousands, so it's not, not going back a hundred years, it just, so there's, the, the, again, it, it indicates that there's been a greater activity on this property than just sort of this derelict piece of property that's not, not of much assessed value. My guess is it probably was used for parking.
I mean, by my math, it's twenty-two hundred dollars a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You said.
I'm sorry, twenty, twenty, yeah, twenty-two hundred, yeah. Twenty-two hundred, yeah, twenty-two hundred, I meant twenty-two, yeah, twenty-two, I was, yeah.
I thought.
Twenty-two, yeah, twenty-two.
So, do we have to, do we have to?
Don't have to do anything, you know, but I just have, I have to, I have to notify you, I don't, just like litigation or anything that comes to the town, I don't have the authority in the position to.
If we did wanna accept the donation?
We have to go to town meeting.
It's town meeting, right?
Yeah, you need a two-thirds vote at town meeting.
We would bring it to town meeting.
Right, and, and you'd also have to vote to do it because.
Yeah.
Town meeting can only authorize, they can't execute. You're the executive body of the town.
Could we vote that we're not interested?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, I, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know that we.
And do we need to vote, or do we just need to inform you?
Well, I mean, that would finalize it.
Yeah, puts it to bed.
Yeah. I would be okay with a vote.
Yep.
Wanna do a vote? Yeah?
Sure.
Okay, so I guess I'll take a motion?
To decline the offer, yeah.
It's a vote, it's a motion, all right?
Yeah.
All right, um, I will make a motion that this board defer on acceptance.
How about decline?
A decline, yeah, okay, yeah. Uh, that, that just, that this board decline the donation of sixty to sixty-six Middlesex Street. as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and we're gonna do a roll call vote again. Pat Maloney.
Aye.
Pat Wojcik.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So the motion passes, so we decline the offer.
And then quickly wrapping up, since last Friday, the governor signed the legislature's bill regarding Chapter ninety funding for the current fiscal year. And the town of Chelmsford received two million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars, which is a significant increase. Basically, it's a fifty percent increase from what the prior year. The legislature funded Chapter ninety at three hundred million, as opposed to two hundred million. And so that's, that's a needed upgrade because of the increasing costs of road construction. Doesn't, it, it probably, it doesn't meet the demand that, in terms of how the wear and tear statewide, but it's the first time in over a dozen years that the legislature boosted it to three hundred million, which is great news. So that, that money will become available. You'll probably see most of that work probably in next spring and summer because the legislature didn't sign it until August. And we're nearing the end of our construction season. And then lastly, on double polls, the short story is, is the number of double polls this month increased by three to fifty-three. There were six double polls removed and nine added to the list from the prior month. And the other noteworthy thing is Comcast has indicated that since they, they have twenty-five with the balls in their court, they've informed me that they've completed action and are working to update the date, double poll database. And then finally, I did provide National Grid with, with a list of five double polls that weren't on the list that were reported into our office. And again, if people watching this or others know of double polls, let us know because we want to make sure it's on the list. So that's where we are on double polls at this point in time. So that concludes my report for this evening.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, next up, we have appointments. And we have a couple of select board appointments. So the first is an appointment for the Planning Board's Managed Growth Strategy Task Force. So we did mention something. So the Planning Board asked that we mention something in our PSA section, and we did do that. And we are asked to assign a select board member to the task force also. So I don't know if anyone has any interests in this in particular. We can take, I guess we can, well, I guess how, what's the timeline for them to?
They're, they're still taking applications. You don't have to do it this evening. My guess is they're probably gonna kick off after Labor Day. So if you, you could do it next week, or you could do it conceivably in your meeting on September eighth.
Okay.
Isn't Aaron already on that task force?
Aaron is on the...
No, I was on the Strategic Plan Committee.
Yep, so Aaron, you are, oh, the Strategic Plan Committee is, is no longer, right? Yeah, yeah, so Aaron was on the Strategic Planning Committee. So I guess this would be kind of the equivalent. I was kind of thinking, also because you're just a liaison for the Planning Board, so I feel like it kind of makes sense. But, but if you guys want to table this, till next week or just let me, I, we don't need to vote on it. We don't need to vote to...
You need to vote to assign a member, appoint a member, yeah.
Okay.
Is it, is it a vote or is it just a chair, a chair appointment?
He didn't specify it out, yeah. He didn't, he didn't specify it, yeah.
It's under our appointment thing, but yeah, I guess it is an appointment. Yeah, I don't, would you be comfortable with that, with replacing your Strategic Planning Committee liaison with us?
I have no problem with it, but I, you know, if we have the time, I think we should take the opportunity to just make sure that there's nobody else that would be interested in it. And I haven't talked to, you know, or if Jeff or somebody else or Pat.
Okay.
But obviously, I, I've had the experience. I was part of drafting that and spent, you know, the better part of a year doing that. So I certainly understand the task. And if, if you choose and the rest of the board chooses, I'll be more than happy to do it.
Okay, okay. So can we, can we table this till next week and just add it till next week? And next week we'll make an appointment? And then if anybody else wants to jump at it or they can, okay. And next up, we have a select board appointment for the Housing Authority.
And this is one probably not gonna be able to act on this evening either. We'll give you the background in this. Under the state law, the Housing Authority is composed of multiple appointing authorities. Most of them, the members, in this case, three members are appointed, are elected on the ballot for five-year terms. Then you have the citizen appointee, and then you have the governor's appointee to a housing authority. And the law also provides that if the governor fails to appoint somebody within a hundred and twenty days of the vacancy, then it goes to the town select board to, to fill that vacancy. We've been notified by David Hettison that a hundred and twenty days has passed and that, as he noted, that in many of the cases, the governor takes no action. Therefore, the, it now falls to the select board to appoint somebody. David informs us that Charisse Lattimore has, has expressed interest in the position. I reached out to her when I received this email from David Hettison and suggested she submit on a committee application form. She has not at this point. So at this point, we've not received an application from Charisse. And I think we can add it to our list of committee vacancies and probably do with this at September eighth to allow people time to consider whether they want to be on the board rather than, you know, because I don't understand why Charisse hasn't expressed more of an interest. And again, it's your appointment. My thought would be is what we can do is promote this vacancy and then come back on September eighth. I think probably makes the most sense because it is, it is a multi-year term, an expired term remaining.
Two years?
Yeah, two years left. And it is kind of important for the Housing Authority, so.
Follow, follow normal channels of application.
So we'll do that on nine eight, okay?
Yeah, that's fine. So if anyone's interested in being a part of the Chelmsford Housing Authority, now's the time.
I'll have to go through the election.
Your application.
Submit your application.
And I have three appointments for your confirmation this evening. One to the Age Friendly Implementation Committee, Janine Madden, for a three-year term ending on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight. And then to the Parade Committee, Nicholas Hood and Florence Vigent for one-year terms ending July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Anybody has any, nobody has any questions? I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the town manager appointments of Janine Madden to the Age Friendly Implementation Committee, Nicholas Hood to the Chelmsford Parade Committee, and Florence Vigent to the Parade Committee as presented.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, and we'll do a roll call vote again. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
And Pat Wojcik.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, Paul. Okay, and next up, we have meeting minutes. I think there were some changes that I submitted for these, but I think you had already caught them. I sent them to James and he said, he said Pat already saw them.
Well, there is one on, on page four that I, that I missed on the July twenty-first minutes. Looks like the third paragraph, Chair Drew, reviewed the written annual employee performance with town manager. That's not how you spell Paul's first name.
This is true.
I don't know how I missed that.
I don't know how you missed that either, Pat. Very detailed. Okay. Did anybody have any other comments on these? I can't remember where the other one was. Okay, if nobody else has anything, I'll take a, a motion. Oh, maybe we have to do them separately because one of them is amended? Or just, you can just do them both at once?
You can just say it's amended.
Yeah, okay.
We have two sets, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make a, a motion that the board recommend approval of the meeting minutes from the June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five meeting and the meeting from July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five as presented.
As amended, one second.
As amended, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Sorry, I'm actually just noticing something else. I might have to... Did the June twenty-third one say the regular meeting of the board at six thirty-one P M? Is that unusual?
Well, that was the special one before town meeting, and we only had a couple of things on it.
Okay, yes, yes, that's why I'm like, wait a minute, this is, okay. I'm sorry, so then we have a motion in a second. We'll do another, another roll call vote. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
Pat Wojcik?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm an aye. They are approved. Thanks. Next up, we have liaison reports and referrals. So we'll just go around. Pat Maloney, do you have anything?
I don't have much. It's, July was a really quiet month, but I know that the Permanent Building Committee is meeting tomorrow night. We should be receiving budgets on the two fire stations and updates on the plans for, for such. That's tomorrow night. And then there is a August meeting of the School Building Committee for the Parker Middle School Project, Thursday night at six o'clock, and, and we'll proceed from there. We're hoping to get an architect on board soon and get working. So that's all I have.
Yeah, I just have a couple of notifications of condolences, unfortunately. Kathy O'Brien, I don't know how many people know Kathy O'Brien. She was one of the founding members of the Civic Committee, which is no longer in effect. She also worked with Fran McDougall a lot on the, on the farmer's market that we had many years ago and was very active in, in Budget Buddies. And Kathy O'Brien passed away a couple of weeks ago.
She was a member of the CBA years ago.
Okay. And Jean McLaughlin also passed away last week. Yeah, she was a member of the League of Women Voters, very active. She volunteered a lot in the town clerk's office, and she was also a very active member of the Friends for the Library. So condolences to the families of, of both of them, that I have. And I do have one. I don't know if these two gentlemen are waiting. I don't know if they missed at the public input.
I came here to talk of public input, and Mr. Cohen's got a talk, and the chairman ran on the roof. The common courtesy is for the chair to say, is anyone here do public input? That's what you...
Well, I look to town, the town manager, because he knows who's on Zoom.
Nobody on Zoom.
So, yeah, so that's generally why I look to him. I look to the audience, but then I look to him for Zoom. But can we just revert and do public input now? Can we do that? Okay, so I guess I'm gonna reopen the public input. I'm sorry you had to wait through that whole meeting.
What I came for, I guess Mr. Cohen's in a hurry to get home to supper. I don't know.
That's not fair. That's not fair.
Aren't we all, though? Aren't we all?
I'm Ken Harkins. I live at one ten Robert R. Bigelow Street. I'm here for that. But what I came to say is you have two employees I came to say thank you to, which is your veteran service people. I avail myself of their service. I'm very happy with them. They're a credit to the town. And I urge all the veterans to take advantage of it. And also to take advantage of getting their name, if they have a loved one, they want the name engraved on the, the veterans' bar to do that. But that's what I came for, was to say that. But on another note, maybe Mr. Co, Mr. Cohen can find out from New England Tel when they're gonna replace the pole at the corner of Blazonis and Robert R. Bigelow. It's been red flagged for two times for many years now. They might want to replace that sucker before everything goes kapui. They replaced up the street, but they missed that one.
Where is it again? At?
At the corner of Blazonis and Robert R. Bigelow. It's, it's a telephone pole you run into if you miss the turn.
Oh, not a double pole. It's a pole that's in danger of falling.
It's a single pole.
Okay, okay.
If they miss a pole, they hit my, my rock wall. So they're gonna know they hit it. But maybe he can get them to jock up and put another red flag on or something.
Toted with thanks.
Thank you much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you. Just hanging out. Okay, all right. So back to, sorry, liaison reports. Pat, did you have anything else to go? Okay, Jeff, did you have anything?
Yeah, I want to comment on the article for the cemetery. I know Dave Boyle has mentioned many times that he's getting a lot of requests for South Chelmsford, and we've run out of land. And he'd like to put some niche walls at the back of the cemetery to extend the life of that. There's still a lot of local people down there who want to be in South Chelmsford, so I think it's a great idea. Also, on the Parade Committee, we had a reorganization meeting last week because I wanted to get things moving as quickly as possible, two thousand and twenty-six. Obviously, being our two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, there's gonna be a lot of people looking for events. And we started discussing that. Nothing was overwhelming from the board that, that I could hear getting approved. But we did get a new, new chairman, Eric Lindstedt, who is very IT savvy. And he wants to clean up the processes for the Parade Committee. I think he'll do a fantastic job. Him, him and Paige Gillette are gonna work as co-chairs, and I think that's a great move. That's pretty much it.
Thanks, Jeff. Aaron?
Yeah, I'm pretty light because I was away last week, but I did join the age-friendly Zoom meeting. And, you know, things progressed along. I had a couple notes on it that I left at the desk at home. And we have, Planning Board is tomorrow, so there was no meeting to report on from last week. And then my apologies to the Board of Health. I know Donna sent me the information ahead of time, but I was unable to attend that meeting because you can't do that one on Zoom. So other than that, we'll have a more robust update next week based on the Planning Board meeting.
Okay, and I, I don't have anything. So with that, we're all set, and I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, another roll call vote. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
Pat Wojcik?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, and we are adjourned.